Okay, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Could I get a roll call, please?
Commissioner Laird.
Present.
Commissioner Milne.
Here.
Commissioner Nicolason.
Here.
Commissioner North.
Here.
Chairman Freel.
Here.
Would you join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
My Pledge of Allegiance is as wide as the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On the consent agenda, we need to remove items three A and B. And then do I have a motion for moving another item off being three E?
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we remove item three E. The minimum revenue guarantee off for a lone vote, separate vote.
Second?
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner North and second by Commissioner Milne to move three E off as its own separate item. And then do I have a motion to add an additional item of the replat for the 12th and Conwell lot?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to add to the consent agenda the Casper Neutrona County Health Department additional service number one site replat request for $7,400.
Second.
So that's been moved by Commissioner Nicolason, second by Commissioner Laird as the second item. All in favor of those changes?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so back on the consent agenda as amended, do I have a motion on it?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Milne, second by Commissioner North. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Take up the item that was removed off, three E transportation services agreement between Neutrona County Board of County Commissioners, SkyWest Airlines, third quarter MRG. Open for discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I'm a little concerned because of several events that have occurred recently. And I just, we're at the end of the third quarter currently. It's going to be at the end of this month, and so we're basically paying them for things that have already happened. They're not going to be withdrawing, but I am a little concerned that SkyWest is going to just pull out at this point in time. Things that they've said in the past and just the, I'm just not very comfortable with continuing the MRG with them.
Commissioner Nicolason.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to approve the MRG request as stated. This $150,000 is a carryover of unexpended funds from prior quarters. And I think right now tonight, what we have in front of us is just that MRG request. So I would make that motion to approve it.
Motion to approve has been made by Commissioner Nicolason. Do I have a second?
Second, for purposes of discussion.
Second by Commissioner Laird for purposes of discussion. Commissioner Laird.
Yes, and I suppose I probably am addressing this to Mr. Nicolason. Mr. Nicolason, do you consider us to be obligated to pay this money because of past actions?
Was that a question to me?
Yeah, yeah, if you don't mind. Because I don't remember.
You're asking me for my legal opinion?
No, I just was curious as if, as if this is money that we'd already approved, is what I heard you say in your.
No, that, Commissioner Laird, that's not what I said, but I appreciate the opportunity to clarify for you.
Thank you.
The, do you not understand the request and how it's carried over?
I just must not have understood what you said. If you'd clarify that for me, I'd appreciate it.
So I would just suggest to you that there is in the information provided by the airport, a summary, which I hope you've read, that spells out that we approved up to a certain amount of funds.
Right.
That those funds had not been expended. If you're asking me for my advice on whether or not we're legally obligated to do this, I would say probably not, or they wouldn't be before us tonight.
Yeah, that isn't what I would.
Let me, let me finish. Or they wouldn't be before us tonight asking for that MRG amount.
Well, thank you for your very kind explanation.
Any other discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
All right, motion passes. Move on to, do I have a motion on the next item being the replat?
I'll make a motion that we approve the funding for the replat of area for the new health department.
Motion been made by Commissioner North to approve the replat in the amount of $7,400 for the.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, as a point of order, well, go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this was added to the, to the consent agenda and then approved. Commissioner Nicolason moved to add it.
Okay, I had put it as a separate item.
I think that's what we had discussed, but I think we've already added it to the consent agenda and it's already been approved.
Okay, so we're good and we can move on?
Yes, sir.
No, that's all right.
Efficiency.
We're good. So we're past the agenda and I am going to pass it off to the vice chairman and I am leaving the meeting. Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to the, see contracts. I gotta look at this. Do we have any contracts that we need to approve? Okay, all right. Got a little confused. So we will open up the hearing for MS 23-1, City View Estates, major subdivision. We'll hear from the planning department first.
And John, where was I?
Oh, thanks.
In the memo that was on in your packet. Good evening, Vice Chairman. There we go. So this is for case number MS 23-1. It is a request to plat three lots to be known as City View Estates. The property is on the east side of Casper Mountain, at the base of the mountain, along the south side of West Fork Road. The proposed lots in the City View Estates will have three lots, all over 10 acres.
Mr. Vice Chairman, as a point of order, is this the one we had started the public hearing on and then stopped when Commissioner Laird left the meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, sir, it is.
Thank you.
The minimum lot size for MR1 is 10 acres. On September 12, 2023, the planning commission heard this case and they unanimously voted to recommend approval for the City View Estates plat with no conditions. The proposed subdivision is within the 2016 Neutrona County Development Plan and the 2022 Casper Mountain Land Use Plan. And it is in compliance with the 2022 Neutrona County Zoning Resolution. The density for the residential development is one unit per 10 acres in the MR1 Mountain Residential District. The subdivision has been processed in accordance to the applicable general provisions and subdivision design standards of the 2013 Neutrona County Subdivision Regulations. The health standards for sewage has been met. The site has been reviewed by the Neutrona County Health Department and the lots will utilize private septic and private wells. There was comment from the Neutrona County Conservation District in regards to some steep slopes and those will need to be addressed at time of development. There will be no new services required for the subdivision. They have a road instrument, maintenance agreement that is instrument number 46322. So therefore, an improvement service district will not be required for this development. And under those guidelines, there will also be no financial guarantee required for this subdivision. We've gotten no comments for the subdivision and we sent letters out to 44 neighboring properties.
Do we have any questions for staff?
I do. When was the, when did the zoning board consider this? It was.
Mr. Vice Chair, the.
I don't see a date.
The September 12, 2023.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions?
And that hadn't been done as of the last meeting, had it?
Mr. Chairman, no, sir. The Planning and Zoning Commission did not have a quorum at that point.
And now they do.
And now they do.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'd make a motion to.
Wait, 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 wait.
Wait what?
We still gotta have public comment.
Oh, yeah.
Nope, don't get so hurried. Okay, we all have any other questions for staff? Okay, all right. So for all those in favor, please come to the podium. Please state your name and your address.
I'm Sean McCool. I'm at 4236 Caribou. My wife and I are submitting this for the subdivision. I'm going to tell you briefly kind of the process that we've gone through to do this because I think it's a little bit of illuminating, but we bought this land well over a year ago and we've been building a house on lot number two for about the past year. And initially when we bought the land, we always thought we might want to subdivide it, but we weren't sure when. But the world looks a lot different today than it did a year ago, to be honest with you. When we bought the land and started building, interest rates were about two points lower than they are today. We've also been building for a year and we've definitely had a lot of inflation, both labor and materials, that made the project quite a bit more expensive than what we anticipated. My wife and I, we also have budget blinds, which is a window covering company, and there's about 1,000 budget blinds around the nation. And when we kind of look at what's going on, on a national scale, you see a decent pullback in what's going on residentially, with residential building and with commercial development because of the higher interest rates. People are pulling back. People aren't spending money like they were even just a little while ago. We do a decent amount of commercial work and you see there are a lot of commercial projects that we have underway right now, but there's nothing in the pipeline. So my wife and I began looking at this and we're saying, you know what, we're kind of really getting into our savings. Everything's a little bit over budget. It would probably make a lot of sense to look at the subdividing this sooner. So it was really in April of this year, so it was about six months ago that we decided, you know what, let's do this now. And we found a buyer almost immediately for lot one. And we entered into a contract with that buyer contingent on everything going through planning and zoning and the Board of Commissioners to sell that lot. And as part of this process, we had the health department come up. We had to do trench inspections, so I had to hire an excavator, come up, dig 10-foot trenches on the land on two different locations. We had to do perk tests. We engaged WLC to do the plat for us. My point is just that it's an expensive process, it's a bit time consuming. But we got through all of that and we had everything ready really in June to proceed with the subdivision. And our first hiccup was when the P&amp;Z meeting, when the P&amp;Z committee did not have a quorum. And so we were delayed in both July and August because that committee did not have a quorum. And I really appreciated working with, with the planning department here because what their attitude was is they told me, you know what, we're going to see if we can figure out a way to get you served. And, and that I appreciated. And so what that solution was, was in August, they said, you know what, we're going to let you bypass basically the planning and zoning committee. The county will write the report, give it to the commissioners. The commissioners can make their decision based on that, which was useful to me because I already had to extend this contract with the purchaser once. And so that led us to the meeting on August 15th where unfortunately Commissioner Laird walked out during my, my hearing, which kind of left me in an odd position. I ended up, my first call on the way home was to my wife and she said, did everything go okay? And I said, no, no, it didn't. And I, and my second call was of course to the guy that was purchasing the land. What their goal was, was to start construction, you know, before winter, hopefully get everything closed in so they could be working on the interior later at that time. We just entered into, we just extended that contract last week. They weren't even going to do it. They were going to, they were going to bypass it because they're like, you know, this is a waste of time. We're going to be buying this land now. We probably won't even be able to start building on it until the spring. But we, I do have one last chance with that buyer to, to close this, this deal if everything goes well here tonight. So my second call was obviously to him and he asked, you know, what happened? And the only way I could really explain it is I said, listen, I think we got caught up in some petty politics. And that's still how I feel with this right now. And I just share that story with you because I think it's worth being reminded of. And I say this with all humility because I'm a friend of the county. I have a lot of business in the county. I do a lot of work in the county. I raised five kids here. But I ask you to remember when we come before this committee, when we come before this board, we've gone through a lot of time and a lot of expense to get here and we can't go any further without you. Does that make sense? So when we come before you, it's because we have business that we're trying to take care of. We have interests that we're trying to serve. We're taking care of our families. We're taking care of our business and we expect that you hear us out. You can give us advice, you can give us a yes, you can give us a no. But the people of this county, they deserve better than having a commissioner stand up, turn their back on them and walk out of the room. That we don't expect. And I really appreciate Commissioner Nicolason, Chairman Freel, they were here to serve the people at our last meeting and they were here to serve the people of Neutrona County. I appreciate them staying and, and trying to, to hear our case. And with that being said, if you have any questions about this or how I feel about the last meeting, be sure and let me know. I'd love to visit with you about it. But can I answer any questions for you on this project?
Commissioner.
So, wasn't here, but I'm still going to apologize that, that you've had this difficulty. You are correct. This public comment was illuminating and I do appreciate your comments. I'm glad you made them. With that said, you don't have to answer this if you don't want to. Have you had further difficulty with the person that you were already selling? Did they screw up the deal basically?
We reached an agreement last week, finally, like last, because they were going to back out. We finally reached an agreement last week to extend it, to see if we can get this passed tonight. If not, I thought it was done. I thought it was done, which would kind of put me back on the drawing board. But we did reach an agreement, see if we can get this through tonight.
I'm glad that deal stayed through, so thank you for coming. So, Mr. McCool, I apologize to you because some things happened that had nothing to do with you personally. And so there were several things that happened that evening. If you'll recall, two commissioners weren't there besides me. Do you recall that?
Yes, I do.
Mr. Milne wasn't there and either was Mr. North. He left before the meeting started. And I had told the chairman a couple of times that I may have to leave that meeting before your presentation ever occurred. And so a couple of things legally happened that night. Now, one of them was is that, that a few weeks before that, Mr. North and I interviewed some candidates to be on the zoning board. And it's the way they've always done things. Well, we picked two candidates. And that got, probably that was some petty politics. Commissioners then had a meeting and they didn't approve those two people. Had they approved the two people and done it the way they'd always done it, there would have been a full board that could have heard your business before that hearing because the law does require that the Planning and Zoning Commission come and, and make a recommendation so we don't have to do all the legwork to figure out the legality of all of this. Well, that didn't happen because they voted down the two people that we had appointed who had been on the board for three years and had the most experience. One of the people that applied was a realtor that worked for Mr. Freel. And we just felt that at that point, he was a good candidate, but we also felt that this doctor who had, who had applied, who had been on the board for three years, had the most experience. But like everything in this commission, if you don't have three votes, you can't win. So I'm not complaining. The other commissioners decided they didn't want the two people that had served all this time. So we ends up, we end up with no zoning board. Now, we could have had one, but we didn't have one. And then further that day, I hadn't been feeling well all day long. And I had a couple of problems. I had to have it dressed with a doctor the next day. And by the time it got to you, when I was handed a, a document to read, I couldn't read it. I couldn't see it. And so that particular issue and another one that preceded yours, I was concerned with the legality of both of them. So it had nothing to do with you or your plan and, but I would have had to leave no matter what. So Mr. Nicolason called me to ask me if I was okay later that night, but I didn't see that because I was in bed. My blood pressure had gone through the roof. And so I don't like discussing my medical issues. I know Mr. Nicolason doesn't like disclosing his. I know he missed a meeting one time when he was, when he was having a medical issue. And I don't think that the public really needs to know all of that, but since you brought it up and it seems like, because I know you and I, I was going to call you and I decided that I'd wait until this hearing and then I'd explain it to you. But they always say they go to the horse's mouth to ask for an explanation. Mr. Nicolason did call me, but I didn't see the call that night. And so the chairman didn't call me and I told him two or three times that day, I may have to leave because I hadn't been feeling well all day long. And so I thought they would get Mr. Milne on the phone because he'd been on the phone at an earlier hearing. And I guess he was on vacation. I don't know why Mr. North wasn't at the meeting. So, but I'll take the brunt of it because I guess I was the last man that left. So I do appreciate your concern and I, I think you're a good businessman. I've done business with you before and I can assure you that this had nothing to do with you personally. And after I've heard this and I see where the zoning board now is back in order and they, they've done their job, which is required by law, I intend to vote yes for your subdivision.
Great.
You're welcome.
Do we have any other questions for Mr. McCool?
I actually don't have a question for, just, actually, let's wait. I'll wait till discussion.
Okay, all right. I appreciate your comments and.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Paul Svenson, 49 sagebrush on the surveyor for Sean McCool on this plat. And I was just curious if you had any questions that I might be able to answer for you.
The only question I've got, and I know why we have the little small access point. Is that the access point coming off West Fork?
Well, there's a shared access and I believe it's for the well, so the well can get down there a little farther.
Okay, so that's where the well is? That's not where the, that's not where the road access is? Okay, all right.
There's, there's a shared access.
Okay, that was the only, the only, only question I really had was because it's kind of a, an odd layout for a piece of property, so.
Exactly.
But, okay, so that's, okay, that's, that's the only question I have.
Yeah, I think it's down on that elevation up into that little lake there that were the potential well for that lot.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Okay, any others that wish to speak in favor of MS 23-1? Any others wishing to speak on MS 23-1 in favor? Okay. Any others wishing to speak on 23-1? Okay. Finally knows, any of those, any persons in the audience that wish to speak against MS 23-1?
As long as I went back through the planning and zoning, I'm good.
Okay. Any others requesting to speak against MS 23-1? And final call, anybody else requesting to speak against MS 23-1? Okay. I call the hearing closed. Do I have a motion?
Oh, I'd love to make a motion. I'd make a motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve MS-23-1, City View Estates, major subdivisions, made by Commissioner Milne, seconded by Commissioner Nicolason. Do we have any other discussion?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
This question is for County Attorney. There's been some discussion about the legality of, of the board, the Board of Commissioners hearing anything prior to the Board of Planning and Zoning approving or disapproving or not doing anything. Is, do we have some statute guidance on this?
We do, yes, Mr. Vice Chairman, Commissioner Milne, we do. So I acknowledge our subdivision regulations do require, you know, a subdivision application to go before the Planning and Zoning Commission, before it moves on to the Board of County Commissioners. We do have a, within Title 18, under Planning and Zoning and specifically subdivisions that Boards of County Commissioners consider, there is in Statute 18-5-307, a description of, of that process. The Board may allow the County Planning and Zoning Commission authorized under the statutory provisions to be the proper agency to receive and evaluate applications. They're supposed to make findings and recommendations to this board within a certain amount of time. I think the most important part that applies to this is the last sentence in that particular statute. It says that if no action is taken by the Planning Commission within that time, the plat is deemed to be approved by the Planning Commission. So since we didn't have a quorum, we didn't have a properly constituted Planning Commission for a period of time, that's why Planning and Legal brought the, the application before you because we were trying to stay within the timeframe required by statute and, and not make the applicant wait any longer. So it could have been considered approved and could have been considered by you at that meeting.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Okay, do we have any other discussion before the vote? Are you all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. All right, we will open up the hearing for MS-23-2, Westgate Park Number Two, and a staff report.
All right, Mr. Vice Chair. This is for case MS-23-2 for lots 34A and 35A of Westgate Park Number Two. They are in the light industrial zoning district. Everything around them is light industrial as well. The minimum lot size is a half acre with public water and sewer. The applicant is MSJ Oilfield Services. They've requested to vacate and replat Westgate Park Two, lots 33 through 35, to be known now as lots 34A and 35A of Westgate Park Two. The property is on the north side of Yellowstone Highway at the intersection of Nuclear Drive and Uranium Road, approximately two miles northwest of Highway 2026 bypass. The proposed lots in 34A and 35A will now be two lots over the minimum requirement of the light industrial, one half acre with public and water and sewer. On September 12th, the Planning Commission unanimously voted to recommend approval of lots 34A and 35A Westgate Park plat with no conditions. We had one who spoke in favor of the case, and no one spoke against. So, the current outline of the lots and property and buildings, the current buildings overlap the current lot lines. So, this replat is to address these lot lines and bring them back to setbacks that will make these into compliance. It is within the 2016 Neutrona County Development Plan and the 2022 Neutrona County Zoning Resolution. The intent and purpose for light industrial is to establish and protect areas for light manufacturing and storage facilities. This subdivision has been processed in accordance with the provisions of the subdivision design standards and the 2013 Neutrona County Subdivision Regulations. Health standards for sewer and water have been met as they're going to be, as they currently are with Westgate Park Service District and Vista West Service District. There will be no new services for the sheriffs, and there will be no new services for a requirement for any ISD. And there's no financial guarantee required.
Okay, thank you. Do I have any questions for the staff? Okay, thank you. All those in favor of speaking for MS-23-2, Westgate Park Number Two, please come to the podium. Please state your name and address.
Good evening, I'm Sean Gustafson with ECS Engineers, 1607 C Y Avenue, Suite 104. We're the author of the plat. I am here representing the owner and, and applicant to, as the, and to speak in favor of it this evening. As you can see, there were some things that we needed to clean up in the area, and that's the main reason for the plat, plus it makes the land essentially more saleable in the future. And there are some drainage issues out there that we're working with the new owner to see what we can do with here, so... But that's independent of the plat itself, so I guess with that, I'd love to answer any questions if we have them.
Are there any questions for Mr. Gustafson?
All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, those in favor of speaking, in favor of MS-23-2, Westgate Park Number Two? All in favor of anyone speaking for MS-23-2, Westgate Park Number Two? Okay, there be no others? All those opposing MS-23-2, Westgate Park Two? All those opposing MS-23-2, Westgate Park Two? Okay, and last call, all those opposing MS-23-2, Westgate Park Number Two? Okay. Finding none? Close this hearing.
I'd make a motion to approve MS-23-22.
Okay, we have a motion to approve MS-23-2, Westgate Park Number Two, with all the facts and findings from staff, and a second by Commissioner Millen, and a second by Commissioner Nicolason. Do we have any other discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed. Okay, that brings us to public comment.
Yeah, my podium. It's just like a Forrest Chadwick thing again.
We gave you a chair to sit down at.
Well, yeah, but then you, I don't know, you feel funny. Judy Jones, I think you guys know my address and stuff. I'm just gonna read, I took a hydrocodeon, so I'm a little loopy. I have neuropathy in my feet really bad. I didn't expect to come tonight, but I did. I'm here to bring you a few good points, I think, of, of great concern. How long do we use taxpayer money to prop up SkyWest? 880K they got last time, they managed to piss through that in six months. And here, what they are again with their hands out, I think it's time we tell SkyWest, go fly. Fly away. Okay, I mean, everybody goes to Denver anyway. I mean, if you're gonna fly anywhere in the country, I don't fly out of this airport. I usually go down to Denver or fly down to Denver, and then I can go home or wherever I want to go. Especially since it's our tax dollars, I don't think we should be propping them up. And I want to thank Heather for giving me both the public notices on the adoption of the revised land use plan, but I still noticed a little problem in it. While the planning and zoning dates are correct, the public notice for the Board of County Commissioners was dated December 6th, and they passed it on December 20th. That just left 14 days. That's not proper public notice. And you guys are gonna have me up your ying yang over this till you do it right, you know that. And word is on the street that the cities are going to give you guys the power to adopt the one cent proposal to eliminate the voter's right to decide the special use taxes. Instead of leaving this for you to decide, I think is improper since no one is considering what the voters would want or think in this action. I heard it was Edgerton that's doing this. So, I'm asking the commission to deny allowing them to pawn off such a huge decision to this commission and make them stand up and do their own dirty work. If they want to vote for it, then they need to do it, and they need to be on record for it. And last, I think it's time, some of the new rules, we need some new rules added to your handbook. Since we have so many real estate developers and investors on both city council and county commissioners, we should have some rules about inside information on land development and changes coming in zoning, and who can represent landowners while serving in these boards and commissions. I understand many of you and others are in business and development in real estate, and this is your forte of making your wealth through the years. I would suggest some more transparency of any involvement with any upcoming zone changes, decisions, sales, or newly upzoning of property. You could say knowing what is currently being proposed or planning and zoning, if you've got an inside information on it and you're involved in it in any way, shape, or form, I think you should step away. I don't think you should be voting on any of it. I know, isn't that what Nancy Pelosi does? She gets inside information on a stock, and then she votes for it, and she makes millions. The job you guys are doing on the county must be first priority. It's not about your personal wealth or prestige. This is very important, this is a very important seat, and the county must be ta, not be taken lightly. This is no room for good old boys' club and getting in on the ground floor on potential developments, solar farms, wind farms, and profiting from any inside information. At this point, your lives, I would assume that you have made your fortunes, as my husband and I did. And doing this job is to help the community. It's not about, it's not than your, it's not about how you guys rule. We just want you to be transparent about it. I guess that's pretty much it. I can't read it, I made it too small. But that was kind of where I was going with this. I think we need to make some laws on this or some rules about being in on the ground floor because you guys get to know what's gonna be upzoned, like the Forgy property. I mean, it went from $70,000 to $700,000. Somebody's gonna make some cash on that, some coin. There's another piece of property across from the airport. Beautiful lot, would be a great place to grow farm stuff forever and ever. Some guy's gonna say it's a great place for a development and ruin the farmland that's there. I guess that's it, thanks.
Thanks, Judy.
And I'll never take another hydro before I leave the house.
Any others?
Good evening, Commission.
Rose, you'll state your name and address.
Yeah, Rose Marion Saban, Casper, Wyoming. I watched the library thing here before I came in, and you guys had some good questions. That, good for you. Life and safety issues, that's a pretty broad spectrum to say that we need a new library for that. A laundry list of issues. When you want something, you can, you can make up a bunch, a bunch of issues. $12.6 million in grants available. Grants are still public money. It's still our tax dollars, and we did vote no to a new library twice. Three and a half, three and a half million needed to secure. And you guys did question all this, so I'm, I'm not harping on you. What I'm, what I'm attempting to do is support you as a member of the public to support my representatives in what you guys are saying. These grandiose architecture designs, you know, it, it's more heating, it's more cooling. That costs the taxpayers. And, you know, this is historical, and there's, I don't see any reason that some ramps and some plumbing and some electrical can't be fixed. And as far as asbestos is concerned, if it's not disrupted, it is not a hazard. Bruce Nell has even said that publicly. And as maybe a couple of you know, my father has asbestos from the U.S. Navy. Okay, I know all about asbestos. It's not an issue. You can wet it down, you can do the repairs and everything, and it's perfectly safe. Handy, again, I was jotting down notes while I was watching this. Workforce education access. We have a workforce facility for accessing and getting on, you know, getting jobs. We have a college that, that has training for people to go in. And, and there's, there's grants and there's scholarships available for people to get training. Health, they're talking about health. Well, we, we have a, we have a health, county health building that we're looking at building. So, I don't, I, why is the library trying to stretch themselves so thin and cover everything for every need? The Mills Extension was closed down. So, that tells me logically that there's not that much of a demand if we've consolidated to one library other than it makes the numbers appear the way they want. 64 million projected for new, but, you know, Lisa couldn't get her numbers straight before you guys. You, you guys did ask some good questions, and she was totally inept and unprepared. Education, that the library is gonna provide education. Well, we have schools, so if we're gonna do that, how much are the schools gonna cut in order to provide an education at the library? We, there's a mall that's failing, and that should be looked at as something, you know, if, if you want to have individual spaces where you, you can have music and things and venues. But the, the city right now is looking at the, the Sports Ranch, and I realize that's a private organization, but that's coming to town. It's not just costing the taxpayer money to build the facility. I have apprehension that it's gonna cost the taxpayers later on. But right now, there, there's an avenue for these kinds of things. A library is not supposed to suit the needs of everyone, and that includes the homeless. It's, it's not a shelter. We have a courthouse, and we have notaries within the courthouse. So, why does a library need to be providing a notary? There's, there's private notaries all over town. I, I know several. 80,000 residents. How many actually utilize it? Because I'm not one of them. And then she was talking about some representatives for all, all these holdings and stuff. Well, how much are these representatives gonna cost, the taxpayers? We need a county hospital. We need, we need healthcare. We need, we need Rocky Mountain Power to not be charging us 30%. We need property taxes to be lowered. And I'm, I'm, I would encourage all of you, please, come to the Revenue Committee, October 2nd and 3rd, and fight about that. I'm, I'm prepared, I'm getting prepared. Those are, those are unknowns. Rocky Mountain Power and, and property taxes, that's an unknown right now. And people shouldn't have to be making the decision about whether they are gonna use, take drugs to, to stay alive, or whether we're gonna have a, a library. I think that kind of covers it. Thank you kindly.
Thanks, Rose. Okay, any other public comment? Yeah, okay, we'll open it up to Commissioner comments, start out with Commissioner Millen.
Don't have much, just want to congratulate Neutrona County Mustangs for a game well played.
Commissioner Nicolason.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. I appreciate the levity, Commissioner Millen. Thank you. You know, I appreciated the public comment tonight. And, you know, I, I thought that the first commenter spoke very clearly, and, and, you know, I don't know if she, she indicated maybe she didn't, but I thought, I thought it was a really good constructive comment. And I think that we as commissioners do need to look at our conflict of interest policy. I would welcome that. I think that if we have a more robust, rather than just the state statutes, which is a little bit vague, I, I think it's useful, but a little vague. If, if we have a more robust policy, then that's gonna help our transparency. That's gonna help public confidence and trust in us as your representatives. So, I appreciate that. Our second commenter tonight talked a lot about the library. I, I thought the director, the library director was actually very well prepared. I thought she did a good job selling her position and her perspective. I think that they did a nice job with the brochure, the, that, the, the bound volume that they put together. And I know we can get you a copy of that if you'd like, because I think it would provide more detail and perspective. You, you might not agree with it, but, but at least you'll have... More detail and perspective. I would say that you were correct. You heard, I think, from all the commissioners that there were some concerns about... You heard, I think, from all the commissioners that there were some concerns about the fiscal ask, and I think that we do need to be cautious, and I think that there are a whole lot of things that the county needs to be spending money on, and I'm not sure how we're gonna afford all of those things or even half of them. So we've got to be careful as stewards of your money. I feel very strongly about that. But I do think we have, we do need a new library. I'm convinced of that. I'm not convinced of maybe the size and all the bells and whistles, but I think it's a process. And so I'm just gonna look forward to having the public be educated more and myself being educated more. Thank you.
Mr. Lawyer.
Thank you.
Just with respect to the library, I heard Rose say that the public voted against it. In my view, they voted against taxing themselves for it. I don't know that, I know there are people who don't think we need a library, and I think, but the two are separate, whether should we have a nicer, better, bigger library is one question, and then how does it get funded is another question. So, and I've seen, and I've mentioned earlier, I've seen some really nice libraries lately, because I was just trying to pay attention to what libraries mean to some communities, and some communities' libraries mean a lot, and ours has always meant a lot in Casper. And I think they're, they're just doing a lot of things that people don't readily recognize. So that's why I said I'm for the library, but not for putting a new tax on people for the library. I don't know the comment, I have heard something about, there is a legal issue as to whether the commissioners could vote to impose the fifth cent tax on everybody, so there wouldn't be any more voting, so to speak. And I think that that's another one of these legal positions where lawyers may not agree on what the law is. And I see that all the time among lawyers. They argue one lawyer believes it's a certain way, another one believes another way. And I've been in those battles for fifty years, and I'll probably be in more battles here at this commission. So there are, there is case law on a lot of these things that I didn't hear any discussion, that any of the case law had been researched on the statute that applied the other night, but the, the thing was done properly this time, because the, because the purpose of the zoning board is to review all of the issues that commissioners sometimes don't have the ability to and time to go out and find out what everybody's thinking, what people in neighborhoods thinking. There's a pretty long statute on what those do, and I think that our zoning board was neglected for a while, and, and I explained why I thought that was true. And now we do have the full board, and they did make a full report, and I accepted that report. Now, the other thing is, is that Peter Nicolason was the only one who called and asked how I was, or didn't call me, he texted me, but I didn't see that till the next day, because I hadn't felt good the whole, that whole day. But I didn't like some things that were going on in addition to that, but by the time it got later in the evening, according to my doctor, my blood pressure was off the charts. And so I had mentioned I was probably gonna leave. I don't, I don't know why Mr. Millen wasn't able to call back in for the meeting. It's his business, I don't need to know that. I don't need to know why Mr. North left the meeting, I was the third one to leave the meeting. And so that's what happened, clear and simple. But I keep hearing from different people, they go to the horse's mouth to ask the question. And Mr. Freo mentioned that about the mayor. I said, well, but you didn't come to the horse's mouth and ask me about it.
We thought you left because of the seven onset building up on the mountain being put up for
Well, that, that did concern me, the legality of that concerned me, because there is a statute that says that commissioners or anybody that's in public office can't go privately agree on things and then already have their mind made up and come to the meeting. It's a very clear statute. And so I was told that the building was gonna be sold, and there hadn't even been a meeting. And so that did, that did bother me. And there's other things that bother me, where I believe that certain meetings have been held, and commissioners haven't been told what happened. So I'm hoping that's gonna get changed as we go along, because there isn't an "I" in the word team. It's seen just about one or two or three commissioners. There's five commissioners, we're all elected by the people, by the people, for the people, of the people. And so the law was meant to consider all five votes equally. The commissioners all to do the work that the public voted them for, and I think that that's a proper way of viewing things. I can say, but before I even took office, that Mr. Nicolason and Mr. Millen already had, had parceled out who was the people that were assigned as liaisons to the library and the fairgrounds and all of that. I wasn't even consulted on that.
Yeah.
But it was all, it was all set up beforehand, and so I figured, okay, I guess that's the way it's done, and I went along with it.
It's not the way it's done.
But it should be done by the commissioners at the time. Now, I could go into a lot more detail. This, this, this meeting tonight, I know that Mr. Nicolason talked to McCool before this meeting.
He did.
You didn't? He said he talked to you.
That's right. Who's the liar? Who are you?
So maybe, so he didn't say the date.
Yeah.
But the, but the issue is, the issue is, if you guys are gonna do that, I just ask you, because I've asked Mr. Millen to have lunch with me so I could explain it to him, but I haven't been, he's been gone and I've been gone. So, so I'm all good with that, but if you guys want an explanation, I just ask you to check with me.
That's right.
I really appreciate that. I'm finished.
Okay. Did you want?
Okay, all right.
The only comments I've got is, we have a lot of stuff going on in the parks right now, and we had a really good Parks Board meeting this, this last week, and I would, if you've got any questions about what's going on, Michael Brown answered a lot of those questions very detailed as far as in the descriptions, I don't want to go back through everything, but the Nordic Lodge up there, there's been a lot of comments about why we're cutting trees. Well, we need to cut trees to make room for the new parking lot and for the new building. You know, some things have to go. And, yeah, we all like trees, because we're, they're an endangered species in Wyoming, but, you know, sometimes we have to make, make room for, for an improvement, and that's the reason why we're doing that. So they're not, it wasn't just haphazardly done, there is a plan, and that's the reason why those trees were taken out. It's, it's actually to make, make things better so we can make the parking lots the way they need to be, and make the improvements that we need to up there, so we have a better place for the building next year. So.